All right. I'd like to welcome those of you who were not here when we moved into executive session. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's regular meeting of the Board of Education. And we have already called the roll so that we could go into executive session for a little bit to talk about negotiations. Now, we've come back out of executive session and we are actually at number three on the agenda, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to item four on the agenda this evening, that's board meeting minutes. And this is discussion approval of the June 9th and the June 23rd board meeting minutes. Could I -- well, we don't need a motion or second on this. Does anyone have any changes or anything they'd like to discuss about these minutes?
Looks good.
All right. Bart, those stand as read -- as written. Moving on, item five, there is nothing under district highlights and recognitions this evening. Same thing for number six on the agenda, we have no reports. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment, this is the first portion of public comment. And the first portion of public comment on our agenda is always reserved for items on the agenda for action that evening. Speakers, as in the second portion of public comment, are limited to five minutes. And we have one individual signed up this evening, Peg Duffy.
I guess I would ask for clarification on 7.01, public comments pertaining to agenda items. Would that mean then that comments could be -- you said something that indicated it might be action. Previously, we indicated the agenda items which were applicable. The agenda items applicable are not listed here. The reason I ask this question is, other than Dr. French, the rest of you were not on board when this occurred. But my interpretation of this agenda item would mean we could go back to the beginning. And there was one time where we had a -- the best I can say was a tirade about patriotism. And because an agenda item was the pledge to the flag, we ended up with some very unkind comments being made about others in our community. So I would urge you to go back to agenda items, listing the numbers that go with it. I think that will protect you in the future.
Thank you. For those of you who wonder, what it says is, "Public comments may be made prior to action by the board on the business agenda." Public comment, at this point in the agenda, will be restricted to items on the agenda only. And that's what the comments were in regard to. Moving on to item eight on the agenda, financials. 801 is a resolution to approve the financial reports and investments for May of 2014. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, Mr. Griffith?
Madam President, members of the board, I guess I need to explain to the audience again, my voices like this, I had throat surgery. And this is the only voice I have right now. So I apologize. If you can't hear me, I'll certainly try my best to make sure you can. Madam President, members of board, the financials, this is for May 2014. Just to give you an update, we have year-to-date receipts for the general fund, it's $155,279,000. Year-to-date expenditures for the general fund is $125,952,000. And the unencumbered fund balance is $42,096,000. We also have a report for all funds. This district has basically 19 pages of funds, for those of you who don't know. I know the board does, but the audience doesn't. Our month -- year-to-date receipts for all funds is $202,903,000. The year-to-date expenditures for all funds is $169,841,000. And the unencumbered fund balance for the total funds is $56,495,000. And that is the financial report for May.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Bart, I don't hear any. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The resolution to approve the financial reports for May of 2014 has been approved. 8.02 is a resolution to approve the final appropriations for school year 2013-2014, which is also called fiscal year 2014. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it back over to you, Bart.
Madam President, members of the board, this is basically a presentation for the appropriations for Westerville City Schools. This will sort of -- I always try to make sure that the audience and everybody knows what we're doing and why. So it's kind of -- I know we have some new board members as well. And so I'd like to just kind of do a normal presentation. And if you have questions along the way, please stop me. First of all, this is the final appropriations. And they call them final because it's -- we're actually finished with fiscal year 2014. You thought -- July, excuse me, June 30th, 2014 is the end of fiscal year 14. So the first part of this presentation will be to look at the final appropriations, which were originally approved back in August of 2013. This is just an update of how we spent those. The second part of this is the temporary appropriations, which by law, in order for me to pay anything July 1, you have to give me the authority to do that. So by giving me the authority of the temporary appropriations, that allows me then to start paying bills as of tomorrow. Okay? So let's get started. Basis of presentation, again, this is the current -- and because I have a voice shortage, I may not go through all the slides, but I'll do as many as I can. The current amended final appropriations, if you remember, we bring these to you periodically throughout the years as funds change. For instance, when we have federal funds that we get late notification, we bring those to you throughout the year. The last time we brought these forth to you was in early, I think it's May of 2015. We had to add a straight A grant. So you've seen some of these before. Again, the second part is going to be for temporaries. Reporting entity, keep in mind, this is just for the Board of Education. This is not for the city, city or county. It's not for the public library. This is just for Westerville City Schools. So we -- this is the only authority we have is to spend the money we receive. We can't spend anybody else's money. What I gave you here, this is a list, a summary of all the funds. So if you look at '08 team fund, there's probably 30 '08 team funds. Every school principal has them. There's '09 team funds. Bond retirement is '00 two. We have several bond retirement funds. This is a summary of the funds and the type of fund name that they belong to. Capital projects is the '03 permanent improvement fund. Enterprise fund would be food service and uniform school supplies. Trust funds would be if somebody passes away and they want to leave money, or there's some special trust funds. We have, we have several of those. Internal service funds, agency funds. And then you have special revenue funds, which is anywhere from '08, '09, 300, 400s are state funds, 500s are federal funds. We have a lot of those. Again, we have probably 19 pages of funds that we deal with. And these are final appropriations and temporaries are for all the funds, even though the majority of money we spend is for general fund. So, okay. This is, again, this is the final amended appropriation. We appropriate these at the fund level. So when I say fund level, that means general fund, '00 one, you're approving one total dollar amount for the general fund. Even though we spend it in various amounts of function codes, object codes, which I'll go through in a minute, we approve one number for each fund. And so that we're approving these at the fund level. You're audited based on the approval. So if we were to come to you and say we want to be audited at the function code, it would be a little tougher because you, I mean, you have a lot of function codes. And so it's easier to manage them at the function code, but have them approved at the fund level. The object codes, just to give you an idea what some of the object codes are, we basically have, I think it's six of them. Any 100s are personal, so any wages are paid out are personal. Any 200s are benefits. There are no 300 object codes. Four, I hit too soon, 400s are purchase services. So anything that we pay for, utilities, attorney's fees, anything would come out of the 400 purchase services. 500s are supplies and materials. 600s are capital outlay. 800s are other objects, debt service dues, fees, expenditures you can pay to ESC. 900s are other uses. We have actually a couple of 900s you're going to see tonight. We have some transfers that we have to do tonight. But those are the object codes. And those are the same for, no matter what fund you use, those are the object codes that we use. Okay? To give you an idea of how, now this, again, this is just for the general fund here. But the general fund, the 100 salaries for this year, we spent $79,555,000. I guess for you guys, it's this line right here, general fund. And for over here, it's 100. The benefits are at $27,74,000, purchase services and so on. So you can see the numbers, what we're spending for the general fund. I think that totals $137 million, I got it on another page, $137,852,000. So you can see again by chart how we actually pay for those as well. This is why I was talking about the function code. We have functions that basically everybody that we have, no matter who we're paying for, what we're paying for, has to have a function code attached to it. So anything during with regular instruction, whether it be a teacher, would be in the 1100s. If you have special instruction, it would be 1200 and so on. Everything has a function code, as well as an object code to pay any bill, so you can track those. And then to the right, what I have on the right basically is a sort of a condensed version where you have regular instruction, and you have special vocational together, and some of those are looped together as well. But that's how we, that's the general fund by function code. Again, that's just the same graph. But this is, this actually graph is based on those function codes. Okay? All right. The appropriations themselves, this is basically every fund that we have, '01 to top, down through the agency funds, you see 200. Those are all the funds we have. The total appropriation that we brought to you back in May 19th of this year, we had a couple of adjustments we had to do, but the total at that time was $196,523,000. The appropriation at this time is actually $191,659,000, a decrease of $4 million. Really, the large part of that decrease comes from the general fund salary portion, actually. You can see at the very top up here where it says $3,770,000. I guess for you guys, it's right there. We actually have a decrease of $3,370,000 in sali -- in basically in the general fund. The biggest changes that we have on there to the right, you can see some of them changed by $1,700, some changed more. One of the things that's changing on this one a little bit, we brought to you last time, is the state A grants. It's 466. It was $1.4 million, and then it jumped to $1,693. I think that's somewhere right in there, guys, on that side, since I can't see that one. But it actually increased at June 30, or this month, when all the schools got together. So we have to approve those dollar figures. So really what you're approving is, we're actually approving the $191,690,000 for the final appropriations of what we spent it last year and how we spent it last year. Any questions from anybody? So one of the things you guys have to do, once we get to that point, is there's a resolution that you actually have to approve and sign. And actually, just so you know, along with this goes what's called an amended official certificate, which you don't have to approve, but you do have to sign. I actually have to have it to this county auditors by midnight tonight, or it's a citation. So when we get done with this, I'm going to have you guys sign it, and then I'll fax it to them.
How late can we sit here?
No, don't do that. You'll get me a citation for that. So anyway, so this is, this is the resolution that you're actually going to approve. And so that's the, that's the end of the appropriation side. Do you have any questions on that, on that side of it?
That you're asking us to approve?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. You don't have to approve them. If you don't, we're all in trouble, but we do need you to approve. Okay. So let me, so to go onward, the next, the next is temporary appropriations. And this district has, and every district does things different. This district has done both, as well as have done both in many other districts. Typically, what is nice to happen is I would bring with you the final appropriations for fiscal year 14. And then past, we've brought to this board the final appropriations for fiscal year 15. We knew all the expenditures, it was going to happen. Well, because of the negotiations and some things that's happening, a lot of changes going on, there's new accounts or new state grants, stuff like that, we elected just to offer you, bring to you what's called temporary appropriations for tonight, which means all we're doing is, we're basically for the general fund only, we're going to take 75% of what you appropriated this year, and just make that the appropriations for next year. It's a starting point, it allows me to pay bills. And so it's 75%. And you'll see, if you do the math, we took what we finished this year times 75%, and that's what we're starting with. For the state and federal grants and the '08 team funds, we try to get those pretty much run pretty consistent year after year, unless we know that they're going to change. We actually have those to what we believe that's going to be for the year in those. Those are not 75%. Those are pretty much accurate. And you'll see that one of them in the state grant, when we get to, is the state grant. Scott Reeves was working on the one state grant this year through Reynoldsburg. But we also just got approved for the one from Ohio State, which is $8 million. You'll see that on here as well. We actually have that for approval. So we've tried to be as fairly accurate as we can with the temporaries for everybody, with the exception of general fund. Those are pretty much going to be what they should be. The general fund will just be 75% of this year's. And then in September, the final appropriations for next year have to be approved in September. So we'll bring these back to you in September of next year, of this year, I guess, this summer. And we'll give you more detail of what those appropriations are going to be, so that you can approve the final, technically, the final appropriations at that time. Okay? I know this is hard to see. I do have these on board docs now. I put them on here about 4:45, and I think I had Jill change one about 5:15. So it takes a while to get these together. But this is the temporary appropriations. And as you can see, we only have one line. The far right is basically as of, excuse me, as of, hit the red buttons here. The far right where it says 7-1-2014 appropriations, you'll see the appropriations for general fund are $104,650, something on my glasses, $658,000 for the general fund. But then you can see the public school support, which is '08 and all the other funds, they're pretty much what we would have spent this year. So those do come in more or less each year. And as they do, I think if they fluctuate more than 5%, we have to bring them back to you for approval, which we do. So for the most part, if something fluctuates, or for given a new grant, or something changes, or if a federal grant has been drastically reduced, we bring these back to you periodically throughout the year for approval. So this isn't just a one-time shot. You'll see these probably three or four times this year, when there are changes that have to happen. So this is what the temporary appropriations look like. Again, it's 75% of this year's appropriations is all you're hopefully approving. This is the language that corresponds to the, it's the temporary appropriations, it corresponds to those temporary appropriations as well. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I just want to make a comment to the public and, and express my, at least my appreciation for having Mr. Griffith as our treasurer, who explains complicated things like this very well to us. And we do have a complicated budget, there's no question. So he's very good at that, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I guess, just for the new guy, I'm actually signing my name to $350 million worth of numbers, right?
For two years' worth, yeah.
Okay, just checking, just checking.
Yep. And we have your address, too, so we know.
Yeah.
So really, there's two resolutions. The first one is going to be for the final appropriations, and the second one, you'll need a motion or a second for are the temporaries.
All right. I don't hear any other questions or comments, but I do want to echo what Carol said. Bart, thank you very much. As you went through the first portion of the presentation, I was thinking those slides are excellent, and most members of the public really don't have that clear conception of what's out there, what those different funds are about, what they stand for, what kind of stuff is in them. Those kind of documents are really important that we share them. And thank you very much for taking the time to make them easily understandable.
And we'll have these on the, on the website as well, so people can see them.
Great. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
We are voting on 802.
We are voting on 802.
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The resolution to approve the final appropriations for school year 2013-2014, fiscal year 14, has been approved. Now we'll move to the next one, which is 8.03, which is the resolution to approve the temporary appropriations that Bart was talking about. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, are there any final comments or questions regarding this? This is the wrap-up to the piece that Bart already presented to us. Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The temporary appropriations for school year 2014-2015 has been approved. And remember, we will be back with final appropriations in September. Moving on to 8.04, this is the resolution to approve the transfer of funds from the general fund, which is Fund '01, to the Uniform School Supplies Fund, that's 009, as well as from the general fund to the turf replacement fund. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, Bart, will your voice hold out to talk about this?
Sure. Madam President, members of board, this is, two years ago, Jeff LaRose and I had talked about trying to come up with a way to make sure we had funds in the bank to pay for turf replacement down the road, 10 to 12 years down the road. As you know, all three schools have turf in their fields. So what Jeff and I tried to do two years ago, and it didn't really happen until right now, is we tried to go back and look at what the costs were that we were already paying for, whether it be the grass seed, or the maintenance to mark the fields, or the paint, or whatever, and tried to come up with a number. And I think that number was $27,000 is what they were paying anyway. And so what we tried to do is, anytime we rent the fields, we actually take that money, rental money, we put it into a special '03, it's a capital improvement fund, turf replacement fund, so that 10 years when I'm not here, hopefully, you guys will have money to pay for the board, or pay for those turf. You know, so I'm just trying to make sure we set money aside. In the five-year forecast, we had it in there last year, but for some reason, I didn't transfer it, or didn't bring it to you to transfer. We have in there, I think it was $65,000 this year in the forecast, and we had a remaining amount to be transferred in the '09, or from the general fund to the '09. What I'd like to do this year is, I'm keeping with the five-year forecast as far as the total, but I've sort of rearranged it a little bit, make sure you understand, is the, we actually moved, we didn't need the full $95,000 to transfer from the general fund into the '09 Uniform School Supplies. For what, Mr. Byrd, what that is, is we have a lot of free reduced launches. So we still make sure that general fund money is in that fund to pay for all the fees that are needed. So at the end of the year, we do a true-up to make sure that money is transferred to cover those fees that were spent. And so what I'm recommending is, we transfer $70,670 from the '01 into the '0, excuse me, the '09 Uniform School fees. But then instead of in my five-year forecast where I had $65,000, I'd like to put $95,000 in there, just because we haven't done it for two and a half years. I'd like to get caught up on this process. It's still within the five-year forecast that we had talked about, as far as the total, that we were going to transfer. So if you say you don't want to do that, and you want to keep with 65, that's fine, too. But it's my recommendation, because we haven't done it for two and a half years, is to try to catch up, so that in 10 to 12 years, there's enough money in that fund to pay for it. So that's why I put them out of $95,000. It goes from the general fund into the permanent improvement fund.
Comments or questions?
So you're figuring that we get $27,000 a year for rentals?
No, that's what Jeff LaRose had figured out, that we were spending on maintenance fees in any way, that we would have, if we didn't have the turf, we'd have been spending that amount of money anyway, taking care of our fields. So we were setting that amount of money that we would have spent anyway into the turf fund, so that it would pay for itself later.
Sure. Okay. For all three.
Right. And if we, if we end up having, and the estimate we have in the five-year forecast, I think is $55,000 going forward. That number can change. If we start having a lot of rentals and a lot of use, then we can reduce that amount. We were just trying to put that amount, make sure that amount, or somewhere close to that amount, every year got transferred into that fund. If we collect more, then it's just less, we'll figure out what, how much less we have to put in. We were just trying to make sure that there was enough money in that fund to pay for it. And at some point, if there is enough money in there, you can stop transferring it at some point. Like, it's not going anywhere, it's still sitting in the '03 fund of board. At a later date, could still transfer it out of the '03 fund if you wanted to. We're just earmarking it for that project.
I dislike the fiscal wisdom of trying to set something aside for a repair or replacement that you know is coming down the road, instead of saying, oh, we need to replace this. So I mean, that's just wise fiscal moves, seems to me.
That's all I --
Anything else? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. Item 8.04, the resolution to approve the transfer of funds from the general fund to the Uniform School Supplies, and from the general fund to the turf replacement fund has been approved. Move on to item nine on the agenda, this is the personnel consent calendar. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second. Dr. Kellogg?
I believe Ms. Ershizer is going to stand there for Mr. Jakowski tonight and present this part of the agenda.
Okay.
It's been a busy time in HR.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. Madam President, members of the board, as Dr. Kellogg indicated, I'm filling in temporarily for Mr. Jakowski, who's unable to be with us here the last couple of weeks. The personnel consent calendar, tonight, we do have a couple of retirements, one classified, one licensed. We have some resignations. Included in the resignations, we have two administrators that have resigned. Brett Gamble from Hawthorne and Brian Arenma from Faust have pursued their careers in other places at this point in time. Also, in our employment section, we do have 20 teachers who are replacing teachers that have left, either through resignations or retirements. We have some supplementals. The majority of the supplementals will be here for your approval on July 9. We do have some, that's a pretty hefty agenda. We have some one-time payments for some translation services that we need done prior to the school year starting. And we also have some training, where Mrs. Wallace has worked with both special ed and regular ed staff, and has been able to bring some training in-house that is saving us some dollars in doing so. The highlight of the consent agenda is, we have two current administrators who will be taking on new roles within the district. If it's okay with you, I'd like to ask them to stand individually. And then we have five new administrators who will be joining us next year. The first one we have is moving from a special ed coordinator to director of special ed, Gertie Glass. Moving from assistant principal at Heritage Middle School to the principal at Faust is Rob Stranges. Our new administrators to the district, first, we have Cynthia DeVeese, who will be our coordinator of minority student achievement. We have a coordinator of career tech, Anne Baldwin. Our new assistant principal at Westerville Central, Nicholas McElwain. Coordinator of state and federal programs, our CCIP coordinator, Juliette Peoples. And our principal, new principal at Hawthorne Elementary, Angela Irvin. So I've had the opportunity to get to know them a little bit, talk with them briefly. I do appreciate them being here this evening. They are still currently completing roles in other districts, so I appreciate their being here tonight. With that, Dr. Nestor Baker, I recommend the consent agenda for the board tonight.
Comments or questions?
I have a comment. I'm super, super excited about the multi-sensory reading professional development. And when I look below and I see all the people being trained, I feel really, really good about that. That's it.
Other comments or questions?
Welcome to what I would consider the best school district in the state.
Question about the 11 teachers or people on change of assignment that we've replaced people with. Can you give just an overview of what that is, covers, or just a general synopsis? That's the last item, I think. Eight point, or 914?
Nine, I'm sorry.
14.
914. Yes, I was going to add that at the beginning. If we're unable to answer your question tonight, Dr. Kellogg and I have been trying to get through some of these. We will, we will get something for you.
Okay.
Are you referring to the teaching positions? These are replacement positions for staff who have left us, either through retirement or?
It says change of assignment.
9.11 and 9.12.
Oh, I thought you said 914.
I thought they were on 914, but maybe they aren't.
There's someone 914 as well.
911 is change of assignment classified, and 912 is change of assignment licensed.
They may be moving into other people's roles, so it's a bump. So if someone leaves, someone internally goes to that job, someone internal comes to, or someone, so. We're still holding to the five-year forecast and the allocation we had for positions of $400,000. I think that was the number, and the number of positions. So we're still holding to that, but you will see lots of, yeah, pinball amongst who's where.
Okay. So we're still holding to our numbers and that increasing?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So one of those changes of assignment is Rob Stranges, who is on here. And I'm so pleased to welcome the administrators who are here tonight, especially those of you who are just joining the district. Rick's right. This is the best district ever, and I'm really, really glad that you decided to come be part of it. I hope you're still glad in a year. Mr. Griffith, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. We'll move on to policy consent, which is number 10. There isn't anything listed there on our agenda this evening, as you see. And number 11 is old business, and we do have two items there. 11.01 is the recommendation to adopt the revised preschool course of study and pacing guides, and to purchase the resources and materials. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, this is what we delved into at our last meeting, and this is, we saw a number of the materials that were here at that point in time. Does anyone have any additional comments or questions beyond what we discussed at our last meeting?
So, Madam President, President, I'd like to echo something that you said last, last meeting. When we reviewed this material, or when it was presented, I had an opportunity to read through it, and for, if somebody with, with zero curriculum background, it was very, very clear. I thought it was well-written. I thought the objectives were clear. It was very easy to understand. I thought it was a very, very good quality product.
Anything else? I do think this is, this is a very exciting course of study. I actually get excited when I read courses of study, and I like this one a lot. I like the way it's written. I like what it does with and for our kids. It's good stuff. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The preschool course of study pacing guides and purchase of resources and materials has been approved. 11.02 is the recommendation to adopt the revised grade five science course of study. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. This also is the, the second reading of what we discussed at our last meeting. And this, if you'll recall, is only for grade five, although when you read it, Richard, you probably noticed it. It was very clear about the vertical alignment on either side. You saw those components, the strands and the vertical alignment. And with that reminder, I will ask if there are any comments or questions. I hear none. Bart?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The revised grade five science course of study has been approved. And Dr. Kellogg, would you make sure I know it's summer, but send an email, and it can sit there, to thank the teachers who were engaged in the creation of these courses of study, and the administrators as well. Very nicely done products. Number 12 is recommended action for new business. We don't have any new business listed this evening, which takes us to standing business, which is number 13 on our agenda. 13.01 are the donations for this evening. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, with great thanks, are there any comments or questions regarding these donations?
Yes, I'd just like to echo the great thanks for the PTAs, the individuals, all of the groups that donated to the district. It's quite a bit of money, as I require, and a lot of services and materials, and so we appreciate that.
I work for a nonprofit, and we know very much that people give you money when they believe in what you're doing, and the strength of what's happening. And every time I see these donations, I am so thankful for the people who believe in what we're doing. Bart, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, the donations have been approved. 13.02 is resolution to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and OPSI Local 138. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
With a motion and a second, this is what, one of the pieces we were discussing during executive session, and this has been a process over the last few months. Let's see. Dr. Kellogg, is there anything you would like to bring to the table about this?
Just thanks to all the associations and their leadership and their cooperation and participation through the process. It was quick and simple, and I think benefited both the community, the board, and our employee groups. I think, at the end of the day, we have contracts that will allow us to have clear space over the next several years as we make financial decisions on behalf of the public and the district to do things for kids. I think the, the associations and the board put some things in place to protect us long-term, as we experience changes to healthcare under the Affordable Health Care Act. And so that's a little mysterious, is what might happen, but I think we have protections in there along those means. So thank you to those people for their participation, and I would recommend that we move forward with approval.
Comments or questions from the board? Or from Bart, since you had a great deal to do with this as well? I do want to echo what John said. This gives us significant stability. This contract covers a period of four years, which is highly unusual in a school district. And we think it'll be a really good service to the district, to the community as, as a whole, to have this form of stability, so that we know where we are with our finances. This represents a 2% increase each of the four years for this particular bargaining group. And as John said, the other changes were fairly simple, straightforward, and tended to benefit both labor and management. Anything anybody else would like to add? Bart?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The collective bargaining agreement between the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and OPSI Local 138 has been approved. Moving on to 13.03, this is the resolution to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and the Westerville Education Support Staff Association, which is commonly known as WESA. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second. John, is there anything that you would like to talk about or add to this one?
My comments were general to all three groups, and will keep us moving along.
Anyone else have comments or questions? Again, four years. Again, very unusual. Again, 2%. Bart, would you call the roll?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The bargaining agreement between the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and WESA has been approved. 13.04 is to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and OPSI Local 719. Could I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Anyone else want to say it's for four years? By the way, OPSI 719 covers bus drivers and mechanics, and I should have told you this earlier. WESA, secretaries, English as a second language tutors, and health aides. And OPSI Local 138, aides and custodians. These are our classified staff. Mr. Griffith, the roll, please?
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The collective bargaining agreement between the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and OPSI Local 719 has been approved. Moving on to item 14, which is the second portion of public comment for this evening. As I mentioned earlier, comments are limited to five minutes per speaker, and there is a timer, so you can see how your time is going. And we do ask that comments be for the good of the order at this point in time. And we have six people signed up to speak. And let's see, Joan Bellner is first.
We're here tonight to represent the Westerville North Girls Basketball Program. There are at least two sides to every story, and we'd like to tell ours. Last Monday, word came to our families that Jim Klepper was no longer a varsity coach. Mr. Yancey and Mrs. Saunders, our principal and AD, agreed to meet with us last Friday to explain the situation. Any adult who was available and could come, did come. 21 of us met for an hour in an attempt to ensure that any decision made be made fairly and justly. We were and are confused. We're hearing from non-North folks that they knew about the contract situation even before Coach and Mr. Yancey had met on Monday. Before the news made it to us, non-North coaches were lighting up our AD's phone, wanting to help us out with games we had this past week, and wanting to apply for the job, even though the job isn't posted. Also confusing is the fact that through our many extended interactions over four years, we have only seen the employable side of coach. We've not seen a pattern of non-renewable type behaviors. So we question how more than 100 involved people could miss seeing or hearing about multiple ongoing occurrences of that nature, with as much time as we spend together as a group, and with as much interaction as we have with other official and non-official people in the basketball world. On Friday, at the OSU camp, one of our moms was stopped in the parking lot by a veteran picked central coach, asking where our coaches were. She told him that Coach Klepper was not getting another coaching contract. "Oh, I'm sorry," was his shocked response. The mother asked if he knew of any bad history Coach had ever had with any other high school coaches or officials, and he said he had never heard of anything, that in fact, the man was well-respected, adding that Klepper was voted Coach of the Year by his coaching peers the last two consecutive years. Our principal, Mr. Yancey, has a solid reputation of caring about kids and doing the right thing, even when it's not popular. In my five years at North, I have never known him to make poor decisions. You folks and Mr. Yancey will review the facts. All of you will double-check and verify any of the information presented by DAD. If Coach Klepper's positives do not outweigh his negatives, if there is ample, well-documented evidence that something makes him not employable as a coach, then we will have a new varsity coach and a new coaching staff, and we will deal with that. But I speak for the group, girls, parents, and coaches, when I say we want Jim Klepper's annual coaching contract renewed. Our coach isn't a perfect coach, but if he ran a scale on all the coaches in high school basketball, one being somewhat mild-mannered, to 10 being extremely offensive, he's about a three to a five. Many people think he's a great coach. There's a popular quote, "They don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." Jim Klepper is a caring and holistic coach. He understands competitiveness, and the girls are his number-one priority. The lessons we see him teach the girls are priceless. Here's one he re-taught me. Do not prejudge anyone, ever. Before we came to North, we'd heard rumors he was mean, rude, and disrespectful to the girls. I was aware that he had visibly and physically showed an extreme temper in early years as a young coach. In my daughter's three years with him, he has never been or done any of those things. Never directed profanity towards any of the girls, never called any player derogatory names, never laid an angry hand on girls, never thrown large objects. These are all things that many coaches we compete against do on a regular basis, and they still get contracts every year. You already know we have an amazing win-loss record under Coach Klepper. His drive to get us to the state tournament and to win it is unparalleled. Yet he has also taught the girls that as much as he cares about winning, and as much as he wants them to care about winning, winning isn't everything. At the end of the day, just make sure you're always doing your best, learn from your mistakes, and above all, believe in yourself and in your team. In closing, Coach also teaches them to play with heart and passion, because without that, even the most talented player is nothing. Jim Klepper gets what a lot of girls' coaches at all levels do not fully understand, and many do not embrace. It summed up in a quote from professional soccer player Mia Hamm. Somewhere behind the athlete you've become, and the hours of practice, and the coaches who have pushed you, is a little girl who fell in love with the game and never looked back. Play and coach for her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second speaker is Jack Gibbs.
Madam President, and Dr. Kellogg, board members, I thank you for this opportunity and, and for being able to just say a few words. My daughter is a member of the Westerville North Girls Basketball Team. And I, as a parent, and even before my kids got to the Westerville schools, we've, we've been coming to sporting events in Westerville for, for quite a few years. And I've observed Jim Crawford, and he is, he is an exceptional coach, and, and interacts well with students, and does things well. And he, he does something that doesn't always happen. He, he always plays the best girls. No politics, no, no who, who's doing the biggest booster things, or whatever. He, he is, he is very objective. And I just would, the way this thing happened, as a parent, I'm concerned, the arbitrariness and the capriciousness, and, and how, when we did talk, there, there seemed to be somewhat of a vagueness as to what the incidents were, and how many, and so forth, and so on. And I just would ask the board to look into this matter, and review whatever, whatever facts are there, and give this man an opportunity to present his side. And, and he's looked out for our girls, and we appreciate that. And we, we ask you as a board to look out for our girls, too, and just make sure that this is the right decision for our school. We have a lot of support here, and if he, if he was not doing the right thing, I'm sure it would have been in the paper, or you would have heard something else. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Eric Bellner.
Hello. I'm Eric Bellner. I graduated from Westerville North in 2013. I was part of the Superintendent Advisory Committee with Dr. Good. I also participated in the Warrior Way Leadership Summit. And throughout my years at Westerville North, the Warrior Way was probably one of the biggest things that Principal Yancey taught students, in my opinion. And after receiving the news that Coach Klepper wouldn't be a coach anymore, honestly, I was stunned. My sister, obviously, is on the team, and she's very important to me. And he's done a lot of things for her, as well as the team. And I don't see any reason why he shouldn't be coach. His daughter, Mackenzie Klepper, graduated with me, and his wife, Mrs. Klepper, was my advisor, or not advisor, but she was our teacher, I guess, for advisory, our homeroom, for three years. And so I was familiar with him, and did believe that he was a very good coach while I was at Westerville North. And I've seen all the things he has done, and I, I can't see him leave. And I really hope that you do consider keeping him as coach. Thank you.
Thank you. Simone Sims?
Hello. This coming year, I'll be a senior. I was from high school. I played on the varsity team for the past three years. And I don't think that the way that this was handled was very unprofessional, and also, there was no regard to us as players, and how this, this decision would affect us at all. No one came to us personally and asked us how our opinion on this. There was no regard on how this decision would affect us as players at all. No one came to us and asked us on our opinion on his coaching. I personally think that nobody had us in mind as players and as students, and how this would affect us. I will be a senior this year, and I was planning on ending my basketball career with Coach Klepper, and now I may not have the chance to because of the decision that was made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hannah Ferguson. I will also be a senior this year.
Did you sign up to speak?
Um, no, that's why I was talking on her. I wasn't here early enough to sign up. I'm sorry.
Come sign, sign your name, and then you can... I know. And Peg, I know this isn't quite exactly by the rules, but I'm going to let her... her sign up to speak. Thank you. Exercising the prerogative of the chair. Hannah Ferguson?
I mean, I'm just going to be honest. Me and Klepper have not had the best relationship over the past couple of years. I mean, there's always disagreements, arguments. I mean, I've cried, pouted, but I mean, my parents make me cry and pout. So there's just growing points in your life, and I think that my high school basketball career has really been a growing point. And I think getting rid of him would just be a downfall, because not only is he a Coach, he also works at our school. So having him not only off the court, but on the court, is, I mean, it's two different things. Because off the court, you know, he's very concerned with our education, and he is always making sure that we're in class, nobody's skipping, nobody's late, and, I mean, he's just a great person and a great counselor. And on the court, I mean, he leads us. He's our Coach. We listen, even though we might not agree all the time, I mean, we try to get our point across. And even as you said earlier, with donations, you don't want to invest into something that you don't believe in. And so getting a new Coach, we don't have that kinship that we have with Coach Klepper. So, I mean, there just wouldn't be that connection that we have. And it takes time to build a friendship. I mean, I'm sure all of you guys have really good friends, like, it takes time to build that relationship. And so I think changing our Coach, and especially in our senior year, it's going to be hard for us, and like, it's going to be hard to adapt. And, you know, it's hard for us to put our money and our effort and our time into something that we don't truly believe in because we don't have that relationship anymore. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, even me, having all the conflicts that I've had with Coach Klepper, you know, I'm still able to believe in him and believe in the program. I'm just hoping that you guys would do the same with this contract.
The next speaker is Mark Shields.
I'm going to read a letter that was given to us by a family that couldn't be here. They're in New Jersey celebrating, or not celebrating, but going through a loss of their family, and they really wanted to be here but couldn't. So I'm just going to read a letter that they had written and then add a few comments of my own. So this family, they have two daughters that play on the basketball team, the Preston family, and on behalf of our family, I wanted to send our comments on Coach Klepper. Coach Klepper is a very good Coach with a passion for the game. He's very knowledgeable. We have certainly benefited from his leadership. Yes, he tends to show his passion a little much, but who doesn't? We all have moments when our passion is expressed in an aggressive way. His passion is contagious, though. He grows the love of basketball in most girls. I want to call out a trait in the Coach that is absolutely invaluable. He really cares about the individual. He finds value in people that others overlook or take for granted. Our family has had a traumatic year. We have had three losses of close family members in the last six months. While we have received very kind condolences, Coach Klepper personally called me to express his concerns and care for our family during a tragically difficult time. I hung up the phone, speechless at his kindness. In my experience, that response is a trend for him and not an isolated situation. He also has called out a strong leadership trait in our oldest daughter that he wants to develop through basketball. Coach Klepper is a very well-rounded, kind-hearted, passionate Coach. I would encourage his leaders to grow his strengths and develop his opportunities in a way that leverages those strengths. I feel it would be a detriment to the program to cast him aside based on the concerns shared with us by Mr. Yancey and Mrs. Saunders, and son Kim Preston. And then, just as far as our family goes, my daughter also plays for the Westerville North Warriors, and I've been around Coach Klepper for three years now, and we've had, you know, as all parents do, you run into the good coaches, you run into the bad coaches, and he's one of the good ones. Honestly, he is. He really, really cares about the girls on an individual basis, as well as the game, which is kind of unique. And for our daughter, she tore her ACL this year during one of the games, and, you know, like, he was just calling and seeing how she was doing. He would come up to me after games off the court and just say, "Hey, how's your progress doing?" You know, "I know this is kind of hurtful for her." So you just see that care that goes beyond the basketball court. So, you know, I just want to express that as her dad, and how much that means, and her mother, which is, her mother's here as well. I appreciate you letting us speak tonight, and that's all I have.
Our last speaker is DeeDee Post.
All right, I'm DeeDee Post. I'm going to be a junior. I'm going to be on varsity going on two years now. Spending the last two years on the basketball team has been great. It has taught me the value of hard work and self-motivation. I learned how to be a great team member and got to work with an amazing group of girls, all with the help of all the coaches. Not only do we want our coaches back, but we also want our friends back. The choices they made not only affected me and my teammates, but also the parents. We love and care for our coaches like they are part of our family. I believe that they're the best coaches North has ever had. Over the course of the two years, I got to know and meet the coaches, and they not only helped me on the court, but off the court, because, like, I struggle in school, and they're always there, like, "Do you need help?", always checking up on my grades, and just being there and being a good support system for me. And I just wanted to thank the coaches for changing the wisdom, confidence, and heart they've shown while leading the team to three years of OCC champs. Please rehire our coaches back. They mean the world to us. Thanks for listening.
Thank you to all the speakers this evening, and I will make sure that the letters are copied and provided to the rest of the board. Moving on to item fifteen, which is board comments. Do any of my colleagues have comments this evening?
I'd just say, sorry, to thank you to the students that spoke tonight, and obviously the parents as well, but I want to thank the students for being willing to come here and express, and that's not an easy thing to do. And I hope when you share emotionally up there, you know that that's really a good I would say to you that having children and coaches through their kind of athletic experience thus far, it is true, you seek a Coach that you sense cares about the person as well as the game, I think is what you were sharing, that dual purpose. And when I got an email about this, my email response was that I'd try to learn about it and see what was going on, and just make sure that there was some due diligence, and I think that's what you're asking of us. And there are times, there are times, when a team or a community grows stronger through kind of hard time. And no matter what the outcome, I would just say to the girls particularly, but certainly the parents as well, the lessons that maybe you have learned can serve you well at this time, at the unknown time. And so I would just encourage you to keep moving forward and to keep being passionate about your craft and about each other. Just a final piece, it's kind of a sidebar to that. I think it's connected, at least it is for me. We talked through these contracts, and we got numbers, and we vote, and yes, and it's good, and that's awesome, and our president articulated which group these contracts were about. But you girls and you parents spoke about a person. And I want you to remember, behind all these contracts are people. And it's their families, and it's their livelihood, and it's the community that we're trying to build as a school community, and as a greater Westerville School District community, which is pretty diverse. So I'd just like to remember, and maybe this is just me talking out loud, behind these contracts and negotiations, and what can you get, and what can we get, and how do we do, and all of this, there are people, and there are their livelihood, and I am so thankful for the passion that is exhibited throughout the district that you girls spoke about tonight. I hope that makes sense.
I do. I have a couple of things. I want to thank the speakers tonight for sharing your thoughts very much. I also want to welcome the new employees and welcome our existing employees into new positions. That's very, very exciting. And then I want to give a little update on this National History Day that some of our students participated in. Two of them, Madison Seaberry from Genoa and Emma Best from Walnut Springs, went to Nationals for this, and they went about two weeks ago, right outside of DC, and participated. And they didn't go on any further, but that's huge, that's amazing. And they had a couple of teachers that really, and I'm missing the ones from Genoa, and I apologize. Do you know? Kaylee Nesterbaker is one of the teachers. Which, and Nancy, we should be singing her praises, so fill in.
Oh, I sing her praises regularly, and she makes sure of it.
Tammy Saltzman, Jean Trimble, Pat Scherzinger, they all supported these kids, and a couple of them even went with them with their own money on this trip. So we have amazing teachers, so thank you. That's it.
I'd also like to take a moment to thank the speakers. I think it's really important to exercise your civic responsibilities, and I want to make sure that you understand how much the board appreciates, especially our students. Our bylaws, policies clearly state that our students are our primary focus, and for students to muster the courage, because that's what it takes to stand before adults and speak at a podium, to share their thoughts in the public square is unique. It's unique among adults as well. All too often, time is spent talking, you know, at home or in the workplace, and not sharing these feelings and these opinions in the public setting. So I admire and respect those folks that took the podium to share their feelings and their feedback on the situation. I'd also like to state that I am now, I guess officially in Week Four on the board, and since the comment had been addressed to me in the course of, I think, my first meeting or second meeting, Mrs. Duffy, we have sixty-two more days until my performance evaluation. So I'm looking forward to touching base with you. But I have had the opportunity to travel the district already, and my obligation and some responsibilities to the board. I spent about five hours touring a number of sites with Mr. LaRose, taking a look at our ongoing construction projects this summer. There's a tremendous amount of work going on in the district. I'm extremely excited to see those projects come together. I'm glad that the board was able to be an input to the timeliness of the completion of those projects in our last meeting, and I'm really looking forward to the next couple of weeks as we close in on the beginning of school year.
Carol, anything you'd like to add this evening?
Comments made. Thank you.
I forgot one thing.
Go ahead.
Okay, so one of the first pieces of business we did, we sold some properties on Walnut Street, and it's the big white house by the bus garage, and then there was a yellow house beside it. When you go by, I want everyone to look at it. It is absolutely beautiful. They're rehabbing it. I took a picture of it today when I was walking, and I'll set it up here if you're interested. But I'm really proud of it. It's beautiful. It's made our community beautiful. I like it. I'm proud of you guys. Thanks.
I won't add much. I do thank you for coming to speak tonight and for coming to be with those who spoke tonight, all of you from Westerville North. I thank the administrators who are coming to work with us. This is, as Rick said, this is about people. It's about people, whether we're talking about the financials, whether we're approving courses of study, whether we're approving positions, whether we're discussing anything that comes before us. It is all about people. That is the joy of education, and is especially the joy of public education. It is also the difficulty of public education, or any education, because as one speaker said, there are multiple sides to all stories. And one of the things that we do before we vote on anything, which often doesn't show when you hear us say yes, 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 we do a heck of a lot of due diligence behind the scenes. When messages come to us, when issues are raised with us, when contracts come before us, when curricula come before us, you will find us behind the scenes doing a vast amount of reading and questioning and thinking and discussing before you ever hear yes, 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 yes. So thank you very much for being here. We do think about what you say. We do take it into account, and we do our due diligence behind the scenes. Anything anybody else would like to add? With that, the board will be meeting in regular session on July the ninth and July the twenty-eighth. Both of those meetings will be at six o'clock right here at the Early Learning Center. That, could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With the motion and a second, the treasurer would call the roll.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes, we are adjourned.